Five thirty, so let's call the order of this meeting. Jordan, would you give us a roll call?
Please respond by stating present. Councilmember Ronane.
Present.
Foeburg.
Present.
Lee Belt.
Present.
Ward.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
E. Conger.
Present.
Nilson.
Present.
Norvstrup. Mayor Shawnaman.
Present. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. First order of business here tonight is to approve this meeting's agenda as printed. I'd take a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion, Councilman E. Conger, second, Councilman Nilson. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose nay. Motion carries. Next order will be to approve the minutes of the previous meeting which took place two weeks ago on November 3rd.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Lee Belt, second Ward. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose nay. That motion carries as well. Now, we have an open forum speaker here tonight. Senator Carl Perry is here to talk about some awards that had been doled out. Welcome to the meeting, Carl. Good to see you.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited to be here. I think one of the most important things is when we can recognize our youth for the good things they're doing, it's important that we spread the good word. The Exchange Club of Aberdeen been around for over fifty years, and we have over sixty members. We work with the prevention of child abuse, active in our community, and Americanism and youth activities. And I want to tell you a little bit about the youth activities, but I want to give us a shout out to our sponsors of that, Ameriprise and TwistCon. And then Young Citizenship Award, and this is going out to a pre-high school student demonstrating good citizenship both in school and at home. These students have been chosen by their teachers and their counselors for demonstrating exemplary citizenship, great attitude, offering service to others, good leadership, and sportsmanship. It's not an award you try for. It's something that you're given as a direct reflection of your parents, your family, your teachers, your counselors, your coaches, and you're impressed by the different things that you've done and how you've been involved. And the Youth Citizenship Awards were announced Aberdeen Ron Colly Youth Citizenship Award winners Harrison Bowden and Elizabeth Bain. And then the Holgate Youth Citizenship winners were Willa Vogel and Ma Ahwer. And then the Simmons Youth Citizenship Award winners were Stella Dragavitz and Wayne Nicolai. And then the Aberdeen Christian Citizenship Award winner was Nora Fleas. And the Youth of the Month is a little bit different. This and here, the youth is based upon student involvement, and it's in their activities such as student government, yearbook committee, musical organization, debate, theater productions, athletics, community service, and other school achievements, and their academics. Classroom performance also is a big factor in this, and the award is received. The recipient will be able to actually try for a local level winner this year, and they'll get six hundred dollars. And if they win the district, which is basically North and South Dakota, they would get twelve hundred and fifty dollars. And then if they go on to national competition and win, they would get fifteen thousand dollars. So it's pretty exciting for these young people. And the Youth of the Month Award winners are Aberdeen Central Youth of the Month Hannah Anderson, Aberdeen Ron Colly Youth of the Month Claire Crawford, and Aberdeen Christian Youth of the Month Izzy Helm. And I can tell you that I was at the meeting when these kids got these awards. Their parents and their family are excited, and so should we. The City Council of Aberdeen now knows who the good kids are. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us. Carl, it's good to hear from you. Congratulations to those students. Not too many middle schoolers named Wayne these days, so thanks for bringing that one back. Consent calendar is next. We've got a handful of items of consent calendar. Couple bring forward, of course, issues with our annexation of the fairgrounds. Exciting news on that front. And Chad, did you have one to abstain from?
Yes, I'll abstain from item five, aye.
Five, aye. You got that, Jordan?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I take a motion to approve our consent calendar.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilwoman Foeburg, and a second, Councilman Nilson. Anybody have any discussion points on any of these or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose nay. Motion carries. New business, first item, the WRF improvements pay request number five. It's three million, two hundred fifty, three thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars to PKG Contracting. And Amanda's here. Amanda, good to see you.
Hello, thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
So, the fifth payment request is for work done, the lower level, some forming and pouring of concrete on the aeration basin, pipe procurement, standard fees that go along with the contracting, and I thought I would bring along an update on the ARPA. We had eighteen point nine million on state ARPA and five million on local, and the five million on local ARPA has been expended, and we have, after this PKG pay request number five, we'll have seven million remaining with the state ARPA, and I believe that needed to be expended by twenty-six, end of twenty-six. So, very much on track for that, and staff recommends approval for this payment.
I'll move to approve the payment.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson, and a second from Councilman Ward. You'd given us two numbers, eighteen point nine, approximately nineteen, and then five million, about twenty-four million. Is that the total amount of ARPA funding for this project?
We had about five point one in local city ARPA, which we expended right away, and then we're working on the eighteen point nine state.
So twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other questions? All right, got a motion, got our second. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote then, please?
Councilmember Ronane.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Nilson.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks for joining us. Good to see you as always. Next, we've got a possible approval of a pay request titled number nine. It's for two hundred fifty-five thousand, seven fifty-one, and seventy-two cents, as well as an accompanying change order for eleven thousand, sixty-six dollars and eight cents. That is, is it prom or pram? I can never remember.
It's prom.
Prom. Construction out of Slaton for our Tenth Avenue Bridge replacement. Stu, would you walk us through those payments and then give us an update on the timeline, since we were expecting a mid-November opening date, and it doesn't look like we're probably going to get that one?
We're not going to quite make it, but we are expecting the project to be substantially complete. In other words, where we can open it to traffic sometime, probably that first week in December. Right now is what we're shooting for.
All right.
Keep our fingers crossed a little bit on the weather, you know, make sure that that's, but that's where the engineer thinks that they're at right now. And as far as the pay requests, it's primarily, the, about half of it is the last payment for mobilization. There's about a hundred and fifty thousand there, and then the remainder of it is for construction of the approach slabs and some of that work. Subcontractors on site right now getting ready to start doing curb and gutter, so things are moving forward. They have crews out there working right now. They're tearing their crane down and getting that out of there. So, things are moving forward. It's just not quite as fast as what we had originally hoped.
So the concrete, they had the equipment to heat the ground. Is the concrete complete, and then all that they've got left to do with dirt and asphalt?
So, there's still some concrete to be done on the bridge itself. The barrier slabs that are poured on the sides to, you know, keep the cars where they're supposed to be. They still need to do those, so, but that's, you know, there isn't that much real concrete there, so they can keep those things insulated with blankets, and so those really shouldn't be a problem to take care of.
All right, thanks for that update and explanation. I'd take a motion to make those payments.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Ward, second Ronane. Anyone have any questions for City Engineer Stu? Jordan?
Councilmember Nilson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion carries. Next, possible approval of the twenty-twenty-six water treatment chemicals. Stu, would you walk us through this one then, please?
Sure, thank you. So, you can see by the quote that Jim prepared for us here, prices are real similar to last year. Some of them have gone down and some have gone up. We don't typically put totals on here for how much, you know, you're planning, because it really is dependent on how much water is produced, and this year, we didn't produce that much because it was really wet, so. So I kind of look like a genius on the budgeting side for that, but, but yeah, I think we got really good prices again this year, so we recommend approval of the quotes.
Move approval. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson, and a second from Councilman E. Conger. Any questions? Jordan?
Councilmember Ronane.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Nilson.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we've got a possible approval of payments to authorize the city manager to sign invoices for our airport improvement project. First is our apron reconstruction phase two, which includes Helms and Associates, forty-eight hundred eighty-six dollars, then Aaron Swan and Associates for thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Rich, welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is for the G. Apron Reconstruction. That project is substantially complete. We opened that a couple of months ago already. So we've got just some outstanding payments that need to be made. The first one, A. Invoice number twenty-three is for Helms and Associates for Resident Engineering and Administration for four thousand, eight hundred, eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. And the second one, item B, is for Aaron Swan for material quality testing for thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. The funding allocation for this project, as a reminder, was ninety percent federal, five percent state, five percent city.
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion from Councilman Ward, and a second from Councilman Ronane. Anyone from the council have anything to add before we take a vote? Jordan, would you give us another roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Nilson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we've got more airport stuff. The first one is, this is approval of payments and authorize the city manager to sign those invoices. Airport terminal access road and terminal project lot. First helms, fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. Second dummy, nine hundred, ninety-seven thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars, twenty-three cents, and finally night towing for fourteen hundred and fifty dollars for relocating the cars that needed to have been moved in the meantime. Rich, how did that project turn out for you?
The project turned out very well. There's just a little bit left to do on that. There's one piece of curb and gutter that needs to be broke out and replaced. It drains away from the drain. It happens, I guess. But, yeah, there's just, just some minor cleanup, touch-up stuff that needs to be done. But this is for project AIP fifty-three and fifty-four, the terminal access road and the parking lot. Item seven, E. One, Helms and Associates invoice number eight is for Resident Engineering and Administration Services for fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. Item two is pay estimate number three for materials and work completed by dummy construction through October twenty-fifth in the amount of nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. And the third item, as Mayor mentioned, is night towing invoice in the amount of fourteen hundred and fifty dollars, and that was to relocate some cars. Reason we had to relocate those cars was when they finished up the south half of the parking lot. They wanted to get milling right away, but we held them off a few days, so most of the cars actually got out of there. So we towed, I think it was thirty cars total, and just kind of moved them over and moved them out into the grass. So it's a one-time thing. We're not going to, there's still just two, two out in the grass yet, so we're not going to move those back.
Till the snow comes?
We still have some punch list items that are being worked on, as I mentioned, and the funding allocation for this project was ninety-five percent federal, two and a half city, and two and a half state.
I'll move to approve all three payments.
Second.
I've got a motion from Councilman Johnson, and a second from Councilman Nilson. Anyone have any questions about this project or the particulars? All right, Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote then on this, these payments, please?
Councilmember Ronane.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Nilson.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion carries. Rich, another one for you. We've got a possible approval payment to Helms. It's invoice title number nine. It's eight hundred and six bucks. It is for the airport terminal expansion. How's that one coming along?
This is really in the planning stages right now. That project doesn't kick off until April first, so that one will be AIP fifty-five and fifty-six, because there's a couple of different funding sources on that. So, the payment we're looking at is invoice number nine, and that's the amount of eight hundred and six dollars and sixty-four cents. The funding allocation, as a reminder, for that project is part of us through Senate Bill one forty-four from twenty-twenty-four in the amount of one point two million. And then we use some federal AIP grant money. That was in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars. And local share, we're kind of projecting that to be right around that sixty thousand dollar mark. We're looking at April first for this project to kick off. That was due to some concerns by the contractors of getting structural steel.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ward, second, Councilman Ronane. So what was the impact of the structural steel, lack of the structural steel?
Well, they weren't sure if they could get it. We could have started this.
Oh, the delay.
In November and worked through the winter, but that's no fun either.
All right, thank you. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote on this eight hundred and six dollar payment to Helms?
Councilmember Nilson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we've got possible approval of a payment to Helms. This one is for three hundred ninety dollars, and it is for the preconditioned air unit. Everyone's excited about that in the summertime, Rich.
Yep. So this is AIP Project Fifty-seven. That's for the preconditioned air unit that'll mount on top of the jet bridge. Helms invoice number four for three hundred ninety dollars is for engineering assistance on putting that together. And that will kick off April first as well, and that, as a reminder, was the Vale project that I'd been talking about. That's ninety-five percent federal, two and a half percent state, two and a half percent city.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilwoman Lee Belt, and a second from Councilman E. Conger. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ronane.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Nilson.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks for joining us, Rich. It was good to see you as always. Next, we've got a possible approval to declare a surplus Service Duty Weapon Chief John Dahl. First time that I've called upon you in this role. Congratulations again. Tell us about this weapon we're going to decommission.
Yeah, thank you. So it's been the longstanding policy of the Police Department to surplus issue duty weapons to members of the Police Department that retire in good standing. As everyone knows, Dave McNeil faithfully and honorably served the Aberdeen Police Department for over thirty years. He recently resigned to take on his new role as city manager. So with this, the cost of the weapon to be declared surplus will be reimbursed by private donations, and it's actually by the, the members of the Aberdeen Police Department are actually purchasing that for. Dave has a big thank you for, for all of his commitment to us. So with this weapon, it'll be transferred to a local firearms dealer, and all the forms and fees will be taken care of outside of the Police Department. And the one change, I talked with Jordan earlier just to make sure we've got the correct serial number. It's BZAE five-three-one. I believe we have that correct, but make sure the paperwork was correct, but that's what we'd like to do.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, Councilwoman Lee Belt, second, Councilman E. Conger. Thank you very much. I appreciate the gesture there. Dave, any words?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks to everybody that donated and made that possible. Very honored. Thank you.
All right. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote on that one then, please?
Councilmember Nilson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks again for doing that. Gentlemen, appreciate it. Next, we've got a review of bills and payroll. This will be the pay period of November second through the fifteenth, as well as the associated insurances and benefits.
I move to approve, and I especially move to approve the purchase of the new badge for the new police chief.
There you go.
Which was included.
I figured you weren't that excited about your paycheck.
No, no. Badge is nice, though.
All right, so we got a motion, Councilwoman Lee Belt. Does someone care to make a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Foeburg. Jordan, would you go?
Couple abstains on this, if I may.
Okay.
Abstain from the payment to.
Banner and to First Interstate Bank.
Jordan, have you got those?
I do.
All right, roll call then.
Councilmember Ronane.
I abstain as to payments to basica fencing and climate control and vote aye as to all other payments.
Councilmember Foeburg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
I vote aye, except for I'll abstain from the payment to the Development Corporation.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Nilson.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
I'll abstain to the payment to climate control, but other than that, I am an aye, and the motion does carry. Dave, welcome. Good to see you as always. Next, city managers report before we go to an executive session to talk about some contractual details.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So you'll notice that Robin's not here tonight. He hasn't taken his permanent vacation yet. He's out of town for a funeral, so I'll do the best I can. Just a few things to note on our managers' reports. We had a department head meeting last week, and usually about this time of year, we try to determine the two days that would be the best fitting for our schedule for those administrative holidays. Those administrative holidays were added a few years ago to our schedule. They're well-received and appreciated by staff. We determined the two best times to have these administrative holidays would be Friday, January second of twenty-twenty-six, and Friday, November twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty-six. So those are the days that we settled on. If you notice, I threw a press release from Northern in front of you, and this press release will detail for you that recently our RideLine Division, or our Transportation Department, entered into what I would call a very great partnership with Northern. This is something that I think is really needed. It's called the Wolf Line, and basically what this pilot program is going to do is work with students and to provide them transportation, you know, so in their times of need, when they may be needing to go shop or attend different places for groceries, RideLine will step into the void here and provide transportation for them. Again, it's a pilot project, and as you can imagine, if you're going to college and you don't have a car and you need to go someplace in the winter months, it's extremely difficult. So, really proud of this partnership with Northern and Rich for stepping up to the plate to do this. And Rich, did I give this justice talking about it? Do you have anything else to add to it?
As a kind of a wish that NSU wanted to see if we could make this work. So we worked in collaboration with the Student Government Association and came up with the day of Tuesday. It works best for our schedule. They will make it work with their schedule. It's really a very short timeline. It's from four to five, and then, as Ron said, we hope they wear their running shoes. So, we're excited to see how this is going to work, and we'll do everything we can to make it work. We might have a little bit of mission creep, you know, where it goes a little bit later in the afternoon, but we'll see how that goes. Yeah, thanks for mentioning that, Dave.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I just wanted to add thanks to Rich on that, and also the Student Government Association, Student Affairs, the foundation is helping pay for it, I know as well, and RideLine in the city, and specifically at Northern, there's five student leaders who were pivotable, pivotal. Abia George, Gavin Woolman, Gunner Larson, Mackenzie Turner, and Jasmine Garcia, and then their advisors, Allison Coop, Chelsea Short, and Sean Blackburn. So this has been a long time coming. It's been talked about since we started to get a lot of international students around twenty-ten, but it's more than international students that need this service, so we really appreciate you sticking your neck out and giving it a go.
And Rich, were you responsible for the naming Wolf Line?
No, that wasn't me.
Okay, I figured maybe.
I'm RideLine.
Figured maybe it was AI, but you never know. I want to give you creative input.
They got a little bit of Wolf in there. They got a little bit of RideLine.
I gathered, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing while Rich is up there. I wanted to mention, because I haven't seen it posted anywhere, that with the, with the changes in flights coming in, we really only lost the third flight, I think, for the last few weeks, and what I saw Delta do is they put in larger airplanes. So I think they really helped us out, so it'd be nice to give them a little bit of a shout out.
Yep, and as Councilor Foeburg mentioned, we only lost one flight, and it would have been two Fridays ago. It was the, would have been the ten fifty AM departure. And then SkyWest actually kind of made up for that by flying in two CRJ nine hundreds back to back.
Yeah.
And then this past weekend, we also flew in two CRJ nine hundreds on Sunday. So it was the noon flight, not, I shouldn't say noon. The flight that has a fourteen fifty departure, that was a CRJ nine hundred, and then the flight that came in last night, the Ron or Remain overnight, that was a CRJ nine hundred as well.
Thank you, Rich. Appreciate that information.
Thank you very much, Rich. Yeah, so.
Hold on one second.
Okay.
Alan, go ahead.
Chip in.
I just wanted to ask, is there advanced notice that we can anticipate the larger stretch nine hundred, and do we anticipate that that will be ongoing for a little bit?
I don't anticipate that it'll be ongoing. This weekend was kind of an anomaly of the, I think, nine five fifties that SkyWest has. Four of them were out of service.
Understood, thanks.
Yeah.
Sounds great. Chief?
All right, so thank you. Great work again, Rich. So, an additional thing that we did over the course of the week is we met as a group to kind of talk about the Southeast Presentation College building. We started a good conversation in the process trying to determine the future for that building. Of course, there are a couple of things that we're, we're looking at that building for, you know, an educational opportunity is our primary goal for that. And, you know, I'm really excited about the momentum and how we're going to continue that conversation and try to develop that into something that's going to be a win for the community. And of course, if that doesn't work, you know, it has potential for the senior center, so just want to kind of update the council on that and the discussion and momentum that we're taking, you know, approaching that building. The chamber had its business after hours, and I really want to say thanks to the department heads and city staff for being present there. Maybe some of you had an opportunity to attend that. It was really, really attended. Our department heads did a great. Our department heads did a great job putting presentations together, very informative. For instance, Jordan's was was really great and and Ken's and everybody else that's represented in our departments. I just appreciate their time in doing that. And I think we really got some good connection and partnership and communication through that event, so we want to thank the Chamber for that, and that was a good, good time. And we had a couple, a couple ribbon cuttings, of course. Rich talked about this already, but the airport. After the airport board meeting, we had a ribbon cutting for the completion of the parking lot and the access road. And that's a real nice surface out there, a great project completed. It was said multiple times during the course of this how successful Rich has been, you know, in securing federal funding and and funding and grant opportunities. He's doing a great job out there, and Carl will attest to that. Carl's on the board. Just want to say thanks for all your efforts and and how you secured secured funding for these projects, Rich. Thank you. Absolutely, thank you. We also attended another ribbon cutting. It was the SMAC food production or the SMAC Food Company. They're, they have a production plant in our in our business district. And that was really, really interesting to see a pet food production company and and how the process is designed there, but it's bringing jobs and opportunity to our community. And so a lot of great work done by a lot of people, but I just want to say thanks to the Aberdeen Development Corporation, the Chamber, the mayor, and many others that, you know, partnered to bring this this production pet food company into town, so that's a great win for Aberdeen. I want to say thanks for that, so. I also prepared a PowerPoint presentation, or actually, this was provided as as this last week, we attended a presentation at the library. The presentation was from a couple people, two SDSU Extension Agents, Emily Clune and Kelly Eckler Kolb. So their role was to provide a program that allowed Aberdeen to take advantage of of what it is, is basically a feedback-based assessment. So in this particular program, two communities, particularly Aberdeen and Brookings, exchanged residents to go into each other's communities and observe and gain first impressions or impressions of those communities. Preferably the people that will be participating in this are first time, you know, people going to those those communities. So great opportunity to kind of listen to the the impressions that the Brookings residents gained when they came to Aberdeen. So I'm just going to give a quick overview of the presentation. There's a longer work product to this. I think there's probably an eighty-page PowerPoint or work product to this, and I'll forward that to you so you have that. But some real brief things in this this presentation that we're able to kind of gain and and talk about real briefly here. There are many positive aspects and key things, key themes to Aberdeen. Right out of the top, you know, the web presence is is really important. You know, when people think about going to communities or looking at communities, they do a lot of online research. So the web presence of many things that you would expect people to look for, you know, the shopping, the services, the opportunities in Aberdeen had a strong presence. So the people that are responsible for representing their organizations and and different things are doing a good job. That was something that was really positively noted. The community and the people in Aberdeen were noted as friendly and hospitable, which is great. We love to hear that. There were favorable impressions of cleanliness, safety, and an overall feel of of a hospital, hospitable community. There were multiple recommendations or notices about the parks and rec and how our parks stood out, and there was high praise for Wiley Parks, our parks and rec, and all those different things that are represented by what they do really stood out. And I should have back, I should talk about, this was done in July in our summer months, so there are a lot of favorable things about the forestry aspects and and how things were designed and and some of the the green and the forestry aspects in our community. The arts, culture, and activities in Aberdeen were noted. The downtown and its atmosphere was positively viewed in many different ways. Dining and shopping gained favorable impressions for a lot of people, and they liked what Aberdeen presented. And then our education and institutions were noted. Of course, NSU, the library, the YMCA, and even our high school was noted as something that was very favorable or left left a very favorable impression upon people. Through this survey, obstacles and challenges that were identified by this group, again, in summary, were more signage throughout town. So people coming here trying to find their way beyond just what they would normally do through the use of their phone, and and they thought more signage needed to occur to help find different things like our hospitals and in different places. They determined that downtown needed more retail, so we've talked about that a little bit. We understand that piece. They identified our mall being in a state of decline. You know, so that's an opera, a challenge and maybe a future opportunity. They talked about how some roads and sidewalks were in need of repair, so this is kind of, there are two different pieces on this, so in one piece of the of the survey, they talked about how well certain roads and and different infrastructure areas were maintained, but at the same time, there are roads and sidewalks that needed to be repaired, and and maybe they they noticed a few manholes that we're going to work on in the future, too. So they talked about outdated affordable housing, and the rental availability is something that needed to be worked on. And they talked about the west side of town needing development as an area of opportunity. They talked about us lacking in interstate, and they they term, they they thought that we limited, we're limited in public transportation. And then ultimately, the biggest, one of the bigger downfalls was the cold weather. So all these items that we talked about, we can probably work on, but I'm sorry, we can't work on the cold weather. However, people from Brookings probably are used to that as well. So the next steps in this are obviously planning. Planning sessions are something that we look forward to doing in the future and identifying how we can identify our our biggest needs and prioritize those things. But this is a useful product, and again, I'll forward this to you so you have this. Does anybody have any questions at all? All right, with that, one thing, Stu, we talked about the Tenth Avenue Bridge. Any updates on Eighth Avenue and the Water Tower Transmission Project?
Sure, so we're actually getting a lot more of the water main in the ground for this transmission line for the Water Tower than I thought we would this year. The contractors already got water main in from the booster station up to Eighth Avenue. They're out into the street on Eighth Avenue. That's why the street's been closed up there. That will be paved tomorrow, and we anticipate that we should be able to have that open by Friday. So that part of it should be kind of wrapped up for the year. And then the contractors continuing to work east of Brown County nineteen. We'll put a little bit of temporary asphalt surface in that intersection of nineteen and and Eighth Avenue. And then also they'll patch Third Avenue, Fifth Avenue where we went through earlier, so that that part of the project's progressing very nicely. Water Tower side of it, they have completed working on the foundations. They're getting ready to, they're forming up the the cap that goes on top of the 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 foundation. And then from there, they'll go directly into bringing in their wall forms and start working to pour the walls up. And that, they anticipate they'll start on that in December sometime, so that is progressing along quite nicely as well.
All right, thank you. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Stu. Appreciate that. Next, we've got an executive session, so why don't we take just a few moments and let the people that don't need to be here for that give them a chance to leave, then we will.